Steve, I got a question. I just was going through the updated packet.
Yes.
And is there supposed to be a printout in it for the tax discussion we're having tonight?
There is.
You should have received the revised packet this morning.
Yeah, it's called Great Barrington Residential Exemption Study. That's where it says on the front of it. The good news, if you didn't get it or didn't see it, we're not making any decisions tonight.
Okay, good.
Hello, Ed.
Hello. You see Lee in the wedding room?
Yeah, I just promoted her. Hello, Lee.
Right, hey.
Hey Lou, just unmute yourself if you have a question.
No, I have no question. I just want to let everyone know that I was on.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks, Lou. Hey, Garfield.
Hello, hope everyone's doing well.
Everyone's doing well, I think.
Ready for tomorrow's chill?
Yeah, another sweater on, I guess.
Yeah, for three.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's June 16, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL 7C 3820F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meetings through any medium. The beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, by the Town of Great Barrington, and by other parties, including the Eagle and I believe the Edge is also, yes, Terry, sorry. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed, in fact, be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So we'll start with approval of minutes of December 13, 2021, and December 20, 2021. The agenda says 22. We're not there yet. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 13, 2021, and the minutes of December 20, 2021.
Second. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, it's a roll call vote. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, unanimous. Select Board's announcements, statements, Garfield?
Yeah, go Alabama.
There you go. Eric?
None at this time, thank you.
Ed?
Nothing.
Lee?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Town managers' report. Mark?
Thanks, Steve. I just have a few items tonight. First off is Houston Water Works. I don't have anything new to report this evening, not that I can discuss publicly anyway. But I do wanted to say that we continue to meet closely, or sorry, work closely with our legal counsel, and we're discussing our strategy with select board members on a weekly basis. The Division Street Bridge, the bridge replacement bid was advertised last week, and I'm happy to report that we're on schedule with this project. The bid opening is scheduled for the end of next month, which puts us on track for a spring, early summer construction schedule, so the the bridge should be reopening next summer, as long as everything goes as planned. The Houstonic School roof, also something I mentioned at our last meeting, that I would provide an update tonight on. The contract for the installation of a rubber membrane was signed, so on the roof, of course. The low bidder was La Rochelle Construction Company from Hadley, Mass., and the cost was $25,000, which leaves us with nothing to board the windows, which was our original hope. But we'll look for funding elsewhere in the current operating budget and see if we can fund that project in a different way. I'm just happy to be able to report tonight that this is finally moving forward after some setbacks and add about about a quarter of what we expected it to be based on the last round of quotes. And I just have one other add-on here before I turn it over to Chris to cover the Berkshire Benchmark Survey. And that's that I just wanted to say thank you to our staff for an excellent job. The Highway Department did a fabulous job this weekend tackling the ice storm. And I also wanted to just say thank you to everyone and all departments working extra hours and coming together as a team over the past couple of weeks during a really challenging time with COVID illnesses being so widespread. So thank you to the staff. And that's all I have. I'll turn it over to Chris now.
Thanks, Mark. I just wanted to take this opportunity to make sure the board and folks who are watching are aware of a survey that the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission just issued. It's called the Berkshire Benchmark Survey. And you probably saw it in the Berkshire Edge or the Berkshire Eagle. The Chamber of Commerce has also been blasting it out. So this survey issued by BRPC with input from people like me and other board and commission members. Over the last few months, we developed the survey to look at things, you know, just to better understand the issues facing residents in Berkshire County. So it covers it covers economics, education, the environment, local government, health, housing, the social environment, transportation, public transportation, so a whole gamut of things that you experience and live with day to day. We would love folks to take that survey. It's in Spanish and in English. It's on the Berkshire Regional Planning webpage, berkshireplanning.org. They even have some gift cards as an incentive for a lucky few who take who take the survey and get drawn for the gift card. So really just wanted to make you aware and hope folks will go to the Berkshire Benchmark Survey and take that before it closes in mid-February.
Thank you, Chris. That's so the next is okay, next is a public hearing. Sandy Mason, manager for a new common victueller restaurant wine and malt liquor license for Thai Cuisine Mass LLC, DBA Siam Square Thai Cuisine at 290 Main Street, Great Barrington, Mass. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Lee, a second by Ed. Roll call vote, Garfield?
Aye.
And Eric?
Aye.
Ed? Lee?
Aye.
And I. On the line is Louis Ogiani. Louis, do you want to give a little explanation?
Yes, good evening. Yes, my my client is Sandy Mason. She and her now husband, they just got married this fall, bought a house over on Brook Lane in in Great Barrington this year, and at the same time, she became involved with the the old Siam Square Restaurant. She became part of the corporation and carried out the business of that business until now. And she started a new LLC, which is the Thai Cuisine Mass LLC. She also operates a restaurant without a liquor license in New Jersey now, and she's been involved with several other restaurants in New Jersey and in the Delaware area. But right now, she has an interest in one in New Jersey with no liquor license, and she wants to take over this one here. So she's made the application. She intends to be a resident of, she is now a resident of Great Barrington, and will proceed in that effect whatever needs to be done. And she's made this application to be the manager of the liquor license for this new LLC which she founded. And they have a lease. They they're renting from the from Richard Stanley's business. They plan to be there for quite a while, and basically she wants to continue the business that was there for the last several years and continue on, perhaps on a different level with new foods and all, for a beer and wine license.
Any questions before we close the public hearing? Seeing no questions, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call vote, Garfield?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
And I do have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the license of Thai Cuisine Massachusetts LLC doing business as Siam Square Thai Cuisine, Sandy Mason, for a new common victueller restaurant and wine and malt liquor license.
Any discussion? Roll call, Garfield?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Ed? Lee?
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you, Lou.
Well, thank you very much. Good night.
Next, we have new business. First one is a tax exemption and discount options. This is going to be, just so the board understands, an overview of which we asked Ross to come back and give us an overview on our options, and then we'll ask questions, and my anticipation is we will continue this to another meeting. We're not going to make any decisions tonight, and this would take up more time than just part of a meeting. I think this would probably be a whole meeting if we decide to think about implementing this. So let's start with the presentation. Mark, if you want to help me promote people?
Sure, I did want to just also add that Carmel, our accountant, is on the line, as well as Mike Quinlevin, who is a consultant to our assessing department. So we'll try to walk you through the packet summary and answer any questions you have.
You guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Just trying to find Mike.
Yeah, me too. I lost Mike here.
Ross, is there a chance Mike is calling in?
He should be logging in. I mean, he might be under a 508 number if he is.
Yeah, I've seen a 508 number. That's why I asked. Let's see if that's him.
That would be Mike.
Mike, is that you?
He's probably.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Mike Quinlevin here, pleased to be there with you.
Are we all set to go?
Yes, we're all set to go, Ross.
Okay, so as many, good evening, everybody. So as many of you know, we've been asked, you know, multiple times in the past to take a look at the residential exemption. And so this year, you know, we decided to engage Mike Quinlevin to assist us in that effort. Mike has held multiple positions in his lifetime. You know, with the state, he's been a treasurer, collector, he's been on various selectors in the eastern part of the state, and is highly proficient in doing this kind of analysis. So based on the most current information that we have, okay, our current assessed values, our current tax rate, you know, we put together this initial analysis, we're heading into residential exemption, and how it would impact people in Great Barrington. And if you look at the the analysis that we put in front of you, it basically breaks it down into three different scenarios. And what we're going to do is kind of take you through those scenarios and explain them to you, and then certainly we will be available to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike at this point. I'll let him kind of take you through it, and we'll go from there.
Are we going to be able, Mark, are we going to be able to put this on the screen?
I don't have it as a standalone document, but let me just look if I can break it out of the packet.
For people in the audience, it might mean a lot more, but right now, we have 27 attendees and nine panelists, for those at home keeping track.
Do you want us to get into it, or are you still trying to put it up on the screen?
And if Mark can, he will. If not, it's fine.
Okay, Mike?
Okay, hello. Let me just go through it quick. We tried to keep it down as a thumbnail for you. We understand that it's a tool for policy decision. What we did was we analyzed the database for all the parcels in town for the fiscal '22 approved tax rate. We come up with, of course, your 1486 is your tax rate on an option one per thousand evaluation. Now, just as a short explanation, what what a residential exemption does is it it's revenue neutral. It does not increase or decrease the amount of taxation to the class one residential property. It simply shifts the burden of taxation between parcels. Primarily, it will relieve lower value parcels, which are owner occupied residential, and shift that to higher value properties, which are residential, properties which are residential and not owner occupied. This would be second homes, this would be rental homes, this would be apartments, vacant land, mixed use chapter, mixed use land that has residential value. What we find is we have a count of parcels in town that are in the residential class of 3,456 with a value of $1,349 million and an average value of $390,360 per parcel. The law now allows, with that average established, that you can vote a shift in that rate. That is anywhere from 10% up to 35%. So, for example, if I were to do 10%, okay, then what I would do is I would have 10% of the 390, 360, which would be the amount of the total change in valuation. Now, what we have to do, obviously, once we establish that, is we have to remove parcels, okay, which are not eligible. They are not owner occupied, they are not housing. Okay, this would include vacant homes, vacation homes, corporate ownership. It's a little dicey here because, again, it's an estimate. The best we can do at this point without a census is to evaluate who's being billed out of town. The assumption is is they're not residents. So we take from that 356, I'm sorry, 3,456 parcels, and we come up with 1,445 or 42% of the parcels are ineligible. They would not receive, they would pay. Eligible parcels, 2011, that's 58% of the parcels. What we've done is we've applied the exemption on three benchmarks, 10%, 24%, and 35% of the average. One caveat, on lower value parcels, no value can be reduced less than 10% of the actual value. So everybody still pays something. What we find at the 1,800 qualified parcels, we've broken it down within the classes into into deciles. So, for example, we would say the first decile would be zero to $211,600 in value, amounting to 182 parcels. So by bringing 180 parcels forward, 10, we establish basically upper limits for the tax, and we break down within the percentage chosen, what the benefit would be to the eligible parcels as we guess now. I don't know if you can see it on the screen, but
No, it's not on the screen.
Okay, so what we have is at a 10%, you would have a total shift to the lower classes of $551,000 at 10%, $1,448,000 at 24%, $2,269,000 at 35%. This would require, depending on your choice, that the tax rate would move up from your 1486 to, in the case of 10%, in order to cover the amount, would be 1578 per thousand at 10%, 1727 at 24%, and $18.64 per thousand at 35%. Average benefit at the 10% class, $306, at the 24, $804, at the 35, $1,260. What happens because of the increasing tax rate, after a certain value in the home, the increased tax eats away any of the benefit, and even though those people are in the program, they would then become payers. We have in that class 210, 209 parcels that actually are in the program, but would pay more tax because of the values. Those values would begin at per parcel. Breaking those down at 21 by value, 21 for each decile, we would come up with those in the program at 10% paying at the 1578 per thousand would actually pay a total for those 209 parcels of $65,000. of sixty five thousand, eight hundred and thirty six dollars in excess of what they would with an option one rate. Twenty four percent would pay a total of a hundred and seventy, one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And at thirty five percent, those eligible parcels, because of value, would pay an extra two hundred and sixty seven thousand, one hundred and eighty eight dollars. Bringing an average to each group of three hundred and fifteen at ten percent, eight twenty one at twenty four percent. And one thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars on average at thirty five percent. The balance of the benefit to those parcels that receive would come from apartments, vacant land, second homes, non-occupied owners parcels. When we look at that, we would say we have fourteen hundred and forty some odd, fourteen hundred and forty five parcels that would pick up the majority of the cost. Breaking those down at fourteen forty five into groups of ten by value. What we come up with is, again, at ten percent, four hundred and eighty five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. At twenty four percent, the burden would increase one million, two hundred and seventy six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. And at thirty five percent, two million dollars. Bringing the average to each class at ten percent, an extra three hundred and thirty six average per parcel, eight hundred and eighty four, twenty four percent. And then one thousand, three hundred and eighty six. So there's some considerations here. Most of the policy decision that you're looking at is basically how to relieve the lower parcels. And certainly, these numbers show that you do. But your property mix creates some things that you really need to consider strongly. Nearly sixty percent of your dwellings are owner occupied in Great Barrington. This is pretty much on standard with everything in Berkshire County. The cost of the program is going to be then supported by the forty percent remaining. The way it breaks out between values is if we look at it, fifty percent, fifty six percent of the total benefits received will be paid by only nine percent, or three hundred and nine of the parcel owners. So the way your properties are balanced there, what you're doing is you're shifting the majority of the cost to nine percent, fifty, fifty six percent of the costs over to nine percent of the parcels. Secondarily, we look at vacation homes, out of towners who have vacation homes, they're not considered occupied. At fourteen eighty six, they're already taxed personal property for a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Now, this is under the option one. With the increase, you're going to now place yet another tax. So there'll be the normal tax. There'll be the increased tax because of the shift, and then they would still have the personal property tax. So you're already taxing the out of towners, you'd be taxing them yet again. Second consideration you want to look at is your vacant parcels. These don't really generate a lot of use of services. Okay, you got about five hundred and ninety four of them in Great Barrington for a total value of about fifty million. Also, you've got three hundred and eighteen of these parcels which are vacant, which are, as best we can determine, owned by residents of the town. They're not out of town ownership. So even within the five ninety four vacant parcels which will pay extra tax, three hundred and eighteen of those parcels are town residents which may, on the other hand, be paying themselves because they're paying a higher rate on their vacant land than while they're also receiving the benefit there. So it could become somewhat of a wash, or it's going to actually eat into the benefit somewhat. You do have chapter land and quite a bit of it to deal with out there in the Berkshires. And we have to be aware that if you've got over five acres, you may be right now considered vacant as not chapter. So you don't pay a reduced rate based on the chapter values, but it could become convenient for some parcels to shift into chapter if they're over five acres. Whether that be agricultural for hay, whether that be forest use, or whether that be recreational use. That puts you in a group there. You're about twenty five. You're about twenty five hundred acres of vacant residential land right now in that group. They're paying about a million and a half property. So any residential chapter that moves out of that million five could become chapter. That's going to reduce the taxation, which is going to require, because it's a commercial value now, to increase the residential rates to make up for the difference in taxes lost. Also, you've got three hundred and forty four parcels in town that are multi-unit or apartment dwellings. Many of these would have to fund the residential program. It's highly likely that any increase in taxes on those properties would result in higher rents charged to the tenants who are, again, also residents of the town. I'll leave it to you to decide, you know, if they're better able or less able to afford that increase. And this is something we didn't put in the report, but I did, and I do regret I didn't, but I did start to file my taxes. And just being over sixty five, I found myself eligible for a senior circuit breaker tax credit. So as far as the elderly in town go, if you're over sixty five and your taxes are more than ten percent of your income, you get a tax credit from the state. In two thousand and eighteen, which was the latest I could find that the state reported out for Great Barrington, it was a hundred and seventy five thousand, five hundred dollars in credits claimed by people sixty five and over within the community. That means that they are residential, primary, occupied. Okay? The problem you have here is by reducing the taxes on those people, you reduce the circuit breaker credit, which is paid by the Commonwealth. And that then gets assumed by the residential rate payers in town. So I would say, studying this further, perhaps getting involved with the town census to find out if we have information or with the elder services in town to find out, you know, basically what the impact of that will be, because we're basically relieving the Commonwealth of a payable and bringing it in to the rate payers within the town. So we'd really want to know what that is. So what we've tried to do here is just give you some, some direct information, some facts about the way your properties are distributed within the town. And then some further considerations to study going forward with this in order to assist in your, in your policy decision on what to do on your next classification hearing. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from board members? I'm sure there will be.
I have a couple. First of all, thank you. This is exactly what I've been looking for. I'm just have the numbers laid out like this, and I understand this isn't the time, nor am I ready to have a discussion. But this will be really helpful when we do. Two questions, really. One is about, it doesn't cover corporations owning property. Does that include an LLC somebody sets up to separate them from the property?
Yes, and it also may involve trusts as well. So some elderly people set up trusts in order to avoid any Medicare implications. Could be rendered ineligible because of that.
So what do you mean could be? It's not an is or it isn't?
Let's say I have the Quinlevin family trust, and my brother is the trustee who lives somewhere else. If I don't have a life estate registered, I would not be eligible, even though I am the primary occupant ostensibly and have full right and use of the property because I'm not the trustee, and the trustee isn't the occupant.
Okay. It does. Then the next one is about rentals. If it's an owner occupied, multifamily rentals. If it's owner occupied, if the owner lives in one of the units, is it not, aren't they still eligible for the exemption?
I would, yes, I assume that they are. I'm trying to get an answer from that from DOR legal right now. But the law, as I read it, does not make a distinction whether you're in a two family or a three family. If you're owner occupied, the whole property is subject to the exemption, yes.
And do we know how many of our rentals fall into that?
It's really hard to tell right at this point without actually doing a survey on it. I mean, what we have done, again, is the same we did with all residential properties. If it was being billed out of town, we assume they weren't resident. If it was a trust, we couldn't determine, we assumed not. And if it was in an LLC or a corporation, no. We, it's out. So, I mean, again, that's where we have to really look hard to see what we're doing. The reason you'd really want to know these things almost to the dime is because if we, if we overestimate, okay, then we've, we've, we've basically overestimated our taxes. And if we've underestimated, we've gone the other way, this is going to cause a problem. And if we don't get the people in who need to be in prior, well, your overlay is going to take a serious hit because you're going to get quite a few abatements to bring into the program if you missed. So those, the question you're asking is exactly the things that need to be refined and determined.
Thank you. And again, thanks a lot. This is great.
Other questions? So the question for the board is do we want to go further on this and put this on a future agenda?
Steve, I got, I got a question, actually.
I will.
I just.
Yes.
Looking to see if I can get more of an explanation under the vacation homes. And where it says vacation homes are already taxed at the current rate and pay, and it says, and pays a hundred and forty seven thousand in personal property tax. That means I guess I just need that explained, broken down for me a little better. Does that mean all the vacation homes, that's what they're paying the town in total? I guess I'm trying to understand the double taxation part of it, so.
Yes, what they're doing is they're paying a real estate tax, same as everybody else in town, based on the value of their property. But addition to that, because they're second homes, vacation homes, they're getting what's called a personal property tax. That comes under the commercial portion of your assessments. And they pay the rate that everybody else pays in town based on what that value is they have in the home, or a percentage of the home value is determined by the assessors. So yes, they do pay a real estate tax and a personal property tax. The point of the, I guess double taxation would be wrong because if we actually then increase the tax yet again on the real estate side, is that a triple tax? Not really, it's still a double tax. It's just you're paying even more now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind, please, going over the residents who are sixty five and older, have some type of tax rebate, if you will?
Yes, the senior circuit, that is, that's a state program. You guys are aware of it. I think you had a, I know I've read some stuff that you guys have put out back in seventeen or eighteen on it, explaining it to the seniors to try and get them involved in it because it's a great benefit. What it is, is well, let's, let's just go and break it down. Let's say if we go by an average retired person who's living exclusively on social security. All right, if we looked at that, we would say, okay, your income every year is, let's say, nineteen thousand. Okay, if you were married and both on there and you were receiving, let's say, the minimum, you'd be at twice that. If you were at the maximum, you would be somewhere around, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars or so for the, you know, the maximum benefit allowed by social security alone. The way the program is structured, it goes by income, and if your income is under a certain amount, which I am guessing most residents over sixty five are, would be eligible by income. These are break off for the value of your house prior to any exemption on the, well, the exemption that we're talking about now, I believe it's eight hundred and eighty four thousand dollars, which there's not, many in your town that actually have that. And if I take my tax and if that's ten percent or more of my income, I am eligible up for a tax credit to the amount that's over that ten percent, up to one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars this year for twenty, well, for twenty twenty one. So if you take that, basically, that I've paid the real estate tax, and I'm receiving my seventeen hundred, my, my my one thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars back from the state. If I lower my tax, I lower my ten percent value. So that now, one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars is going to be reduced because I've already gotten the benefit from the town for the other portion of it. If that makes sense. So by lowering my tax basis in town, I've lowered my percentage of tax compared to my income, which lowers my circuit breaker benefit. And what I've done is I've basically replaced my circuit breaker benefit with the benefit of the residential exemption. So we've moved it from an obligation to the state to an obligation of the residential rate payers by that amount.
There is a program that actually we are looking into. I'm not sure, Steve, you're telling me it's the time to speak about it or not. But there is a senior task to throw that's actually on the books through the state. What will that have to do, or is it working in conjunction with a circuit breaker, or there's two separate entities, or nothing to do?
I'm not sure. I'm not really aware of what you're, what you're looking at there specifically. So without that information, I couldn't make a judgment.
Yeah, we do. That's that forty one A exemption, and we'd have to see how that's impacted by something like this.
So Ross, that'll be one of the things we'll want to come back at the next time we put this on the agenda and, and see how that would affect this also.
Right. Basically, the forty one A, you're not paying any real estate tax because you've deferred it, you know, a number of years, so we would have to see how that impacts it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
To answer your question, Steve, about, you know, where we go from here. The reason I ask for this is every year, you know, at tax classification time, we're asked to weigh in on this. And every year, the Board of Assessors recommends against it, and every year we're told there isn't time, and there's a lot of work to do. None of which I'm saying is wrong. I just want to be in a position that we can actually make the decision as opposed to by default, we can't. So I think I'd like to come back in enough time so that we can get some of these questions we're not sure of answered. We can find out, you know, I don't want to have Ross digging into the weeds on exactly that nickel and dime stuff that we need to know. If that's going to be very expensive, so I want to, answering some of these questions about what would it take to be in a position at tax classification time to actually decide if we want to do this or not. So I don't know when that would be. And my guess is we can't answer that now, but staff can figure that out.
We'll figure that out and put it on the agenda in plenty of time.
Yep.
And again, this is, these are exactly the numbers I've been looking for, so thank you.
Yeah, this, this was very good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. We will have you back to continue this discussion.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
A good night to all.
Thank you. Okay, next, we would have the opt-in to the Massachusetts Property Assess Clean Energy Pace Program.
Hi, everybody. Chris, should we go ahead?
Yes, please.
Mark, I see Wendy O'Malley in the audience. Could you promote her?
Yeah, I just did.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, wonderful. And I don't see Frank. Hi, Wendy. Um, Wendy O'Malley is with Mass Development, and I'm really glad she joined me tonight. You have some information in your packet for the meeting. I neglected, unfortunately, or I don't know how it happened, but we didn't include a slideshow, a deck of slides in your packet that gave you a little bit more information on the PACE program, which we can show to you tonight, or Wendy can review it briefly tonight, if you'd like to do that on screen. But I'll just start out by giving you a, a quick summary of what PACE is. PACE stands for the Property Assess Clean Energy Program. It's a program in Massachusetts and in other states, but only recently in Massachusetts over the last few years. A program for owners of private properties of industrial, commercial, multifamily and, and nonprofit properties, colleges, for example, to, to make energy improvements in existing buildings. The program enables, uh, those property owners to fund energy efficiency, renewable energy projects, uh, and things like that by agreeing to essentially what is a betterment assessment on the property. And that repays the financing and the lien on the property. The approach is intended to enable those property owners to undertake more comprehensive energy upgrades than they may otherwise be able to do using conventional financing. So hopefully it's a benefit, not only in terms of clean energy and climate change and all of our collective goals in that regard, but also helping, uh, property owners make basic improvements to the property and maybe reducing energy costs and passing those costs on to tenants, we hope. What's great about this is that although it involves the select boards, uh, opting into the program, a vote to opt into the program, there's really not too much else we need to do other than work with Mass Development when a property undertakes this program and ensure that that betterment assessment, assessment is recorded correctly on the tax bill. The great thing, and Wendy can talk about this more, uh, the great thing is that Mass Development and their partners work with the property owner to arrange the financing with the bank that participates. They do the energy assessments to see just how much is being saved and whether that savings can pay back the lien over time. So it's, it seems like a great program for us. A year or two ago, I actually took this to the Economic Development Committee and they were supportive of it. Uh, it's just taken us a while to get this back around and to have the appropriate conversations amongst town staff to make sure we're ready to go prime time, uh, here in Great Barrington. So we're here, uh, tonight to hopefully have the select board vote to opt in. And Wendy is here and I could show any slides that may help provide additional answers.
Yeah, if you have some slides, Chris, that would be great.
Sure. Mark, am I able to, hope participants able to share slides?
Yes, you should be good to go, Chris.
Great. And Wendy, maybe you could introduce yourself and you could walk me through the slides.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much for inviting me here to attend your meeting. I am Wendy O'Malley. I am Vice President and PACE Program Manager at Mass Development Finance Agency. As Chris indicated, um, we have a new financing program, um, here, um, that's being offered statewide that was launched in August of twenty twenty. You can go to the next slide.
Sure.
Um, and it was launched by Mass Development in twenty twenty as part of, um, a broad array of our programs that we already offer for financing and real estate, which you may be familiar with already, Great Barrington. Um, and hopefully that you've taken advantage of. So many of our staff members may work in a different capacity, um, on a different program with the, um, Great Barrington and other Western Mass municipalities. Next slide, please. But, um, in my capacity, I run the Property Assess Clean Energy Program, which is a new financing program, which is authorized by statute and, um, names Mass Development as the lead program administrator, where we create the program guidelines and manage the operations of the program in consultation with the Mass Department of Energy Resources, um, who, um, creates primarily the technical guidelines and approval for the projects. We also have a capital provider list that we incorporate as part of this process. And as Chris indicated, the property owner chooses who they want to work with in, as a lender. But we do have an open process that doesn't, um, that doesn't, um, limit the amount of providers that can participate as, um, capital providers. So we have any of those documents listed at that link that you see here as long as the request for information for capital providers. Next, please. Um, so this is a voluntary program. I want to stress that property owners agree, um, for financing energy improvements such as energy efficiency and renewable energy. And they are voluntarily agreeing to a special betterment assessment that would be billed and collected on their property tax bill. And that assessment, only if collected by the host municipality, is then transferred or passed through to Mass Development, who then sends the payment to the third-party capital provider. And even though this is accessed by commercial and industrial property owner, there are a number of benefits to both the host municipality as well as the lender and mortgage holder um, in terms of this PACE transaction. Um, it's not just the property owner who's accessing longer-term financing to install these improvements, but it also hopefully puts their business and their property in better standing, which, um, puts them in better standing in terms of their, um, contribution to that municipality um, as far as their business or property, um, hopefully creating more jobs, um, allowing them to put more cash flow and funds into other activities beyond energy improvements. Um, and for lenders and mortgage holders, it, it allows them to see improved cash flow and reduce credit risk from the improved value of the property and the improvements that are being installed there. Next slide, please. So this is quickly just intended to represent the flow of funds I just spoke about. And really that it's a pass-through that goes, um, all the way through, um, the municipality, through Mass Development and back to the capital provider. And this is by law, because it is a betterment assessment, there is not a different process that we could undertake to have this, um, program operate. Next slide, please. So, um, where the property owners are taking advantage of this program prior to Massachusetts, you can see a number of them have already used PACE in, um, other states nationwide. And what I'd like you to focus on, if, if you can see it, is the left-hand side of the, um, slide where you can see the different sectors, this benefits and the different commercial and industrial property types. And I think that's really beneficial because that's what we see here in Massachusetts. This is what we see the opportunity is. And, and while Great Barrington, um, has, um, different commercial property types, I think you probably have a little bit of each of these. Um, so there is a, is specific, um, opportunity, though, that we're, we've been made aware of that a property owner does want to use it locally. And that's why we've brought it to Great Barrington for an, on opt-in tonight. Next slide, please. And why we approached the municipality for this, um, program. Um, and just locally, Connecticut and Rhode Island have already had local programs operating successfully for a number of years now. They've actually had amendments to their program because of the success and now offer, um, additional opportunities for new construction in PACE, where our program is really only for existing buildings currently. Next slide, please. So Chris already mentioned the types of properties that are available and eligible for PACE under the existing statute. It is existing buildings only, as I mentioned, commercial, industrial. And there's a multifamily, five-unit or more, um, component where, um, those are eligible. Um, a nonprofit, if they agree to have a tax bill issued to them, could, uh, use PACE also. Next slide, please. And hopefully you're familiar with these types of energy improvements. Um, these are pretty broad-ranging. This is, um, you know, just a limited list of the types of measures that a property owner could, uh, install at his, at his property or his building. Um, what I'd like to stress is usually you cannot finance the measures or the items that are needed to install these, um, items. So, you know, for example, solar panels. Usually when you get a proposal for solar panels, it's very attractive in terms of the cost and payback of just the panels. But they might tell you, you need a new roof in order to install those panels. And that is usually the higher-cost item that's really difficult to fund or finance in a more conventional sense. Here, under the PACE program, you can wrap a roof replacement with a solar panel replacement. You can, um, installation, you can use the savings identified to pay for that under a longer term, up to twenty years. Um, this is also true for insulation, things, doors, windows, items that typically have a longer payback or a higher payback that usually are considered by property owners because, um, it's usually an out-of-pocket cost, which is really difficult for them to fund. Next, please. So, um, just, you know, we, locally, uh, we actually had our first project close in Greenfield. And this is for a more, um, uh, an older aged building that's, um, well-known in downtown, um, Greenfield, um, actually across from City Hall, uh, where the property owner took a lighted and vacant building, undertook a renovation and, um, used PACE to bridge the construction financing and the shorter-term financing that he had originally took out for the construction and refinanced the energy improvements into the PACE financing program, which allowed him to then spread out the payments over a twenty-year term. Um, and this is one of the benefits of the PACE program where you can retroactively, um, finance improvements that were funded outside of PACE previously. And you can see here it's just under five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand that was financed over twenty years. And this is a nice demonstration of the type of project that you could see potentially under PACE. Next slide, please. This is our second closing, um, where this was just done, um, for seven hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. And this was actually in the city of Boston. This is a more traditional building where it was warehouse space, which houses retail tenants. And this included HVAC upgrades, a new roof, new LED lighting. And, um, this allowed the owner to preserve their capital expense budget um, in terms of, um, funding these upfront improvements, um, and funding it over a longer term. Next slide, please. So, uh, the main requirement of PACE for municipalities, as Chris said, is a municipal opt-in one time by the host municipality in order to let commercial property owners participate in this program. It's a vote by the city council, the board of selectmen or the local legislative body to allow property owners to access the program and work with Mass Development to identify the financing partner and apply for approval under the technical guidelines and financial guidelines that I mentioned earlier. This financing is secured by a lien that's placed on the property. That lien at closing is assigned to Mass Development and then Mass Development assigns the lien to the financial provider or the capital provider who financed the project. They hold the lien for duration of the financing term until that's been paid off. They also hold the rights to enforcement under a default. So I want to stress that the municipality does not lose standing in terms of their seniority for collection of taxes or other payments. The PACE lender only comes ahead of the mortgage holder with consent in a PACE approval. That is the only item or entity that is subordinating, um, to the PACE lending or the PACE capital provider. And they are only subordinating to build an uncollected PACE assessment in the event of a default. So we're only talking about the event of a default, which is what people want to look to as the highest-risk scenario. But let's hope that this never gets to that. But I do want to speak to that scenario because that really usually is the question that people are asking. This is a non-accelerating assessment. So in the case of, of default, you cannot accelerate the entire balance that's due. This assessment, the lien and the outstanding balance travel to new ownership if the property is sold over time. And that makes sense under a PACE arrangement because energy savings are identified to pay for the improvements under the financing term. That's part of the PACE approval. So if the property is sold, it makes sense that the owner who's incurring the savings from, let's say, the solar installation should be then transferring those assessment payments or, um, the savings from tax credits, let's say, to the assessment repayment. Next slide, please. Um, there is no minimum or max, uh, there is no minimum, I'm sorry, there is no maximum amount, um, that is, um, limited under the PACE program, but there is a minimum amount, two hundred and fifty thousand or higher that we target for the program. And that's just because this is a more complicated financing program, as you've heard. Um, and this is in target to, uh, intended to target the commercial industrial property owners. We need this financing in the higher range. Um, we see that they're usually, um, programs to address, um, lower limits that are more beneficial for CNI owners. Um, this application must be approved by the D O E R Mass Development in order for the financing to proceed and close. There are a number of statutory and guideline requirements on that website that I mentioned earlier. And this is the process listed. Um, but what I'll stress is that Mass Development does engage an outside counsel who records and coordinates all the lien and assessment, um, processes at closing. We don't expect the city to do anything in terms of the closing transactions. Um, really, all you're doing is being served with a notice that we would ask you to place an assessment and lien on a future date on the property as voluntarily agreed to by the property owner. Um, and as Chris said, we would work with the town in terms of that process. Next slide, please. So fifty municipalities have come ahead of you in terms of opting into the program. And, and here's the list to date. Um, and if you were to opt in, um, at a future date, um, you might become fifty-one or fifty-two, depending on when you do it. Hopefully if tonight, fifty-one. Um, and you're in good company. Many Western Mass municipalities have already opted in because they've seen the benefits that they think that this can bring to the community. And hopefully you saw what Greenfield has already seen in terms of their project. And next slide, please. Last but not least, this is just intended not to be a busy and complicated and intimidating slide that actually just to represent the, um, transactions, um, that occur under a PACE closing, the agreements that need to be signed by the different parties and what happens in a closing in terms of the, the items, the, um, the actions undertaken. And Mass Development is in the middle. And as Chris said earlier, I am the PACE Program Director. I, um, handle all inquiries straight wide, but I do have a team that works under me. Um, and if there are any questions during the process, you always can direct a property owner, a lender, any interested party, anyone with a question to the PACE, um, Mass Development contact, and we will handle that. We don't expect the city to, to handle any vetting of applications, processing. We don't want you to do any more work, um, than we absolutely just need you to under the minimum, um, statutory law in terms of the billing and collecting of the assessment. So with that, I will stop. Um, thank you for your time. And I know that was a lot of information to cover in a short period. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Eileen, you had your hand up, then I went down. Did you have a question?
If the question is, will these slides be available? We could certainly make them available.
I don't quite understand why the city has to sign the contract. If somebody were borrowing, um, from a bank, the town would not be involved.
The, uh, I think in this case, uh, what happens is the, the select board, if they decide would opt into the program and sign an agreement with Mass Development.
Yeah.
And then, uh, that forms the framework of how, if in the future a property owner decides to come into the program, that governs how the town works and cooperates with Mass Development.
I'm sorry, Chris, I still don't understand it. I just.
Uh, maybe I could help. Um, because it is a betterment assessment. Under the state of Massachusetts, a betterment assessment has to be billed and collected in the same manner as property taxes. And the only entity that can bill and collect property taxes is the municipality, in this case, Great Barrington. So we have to work with you in terms of the process to add that assessment onto the tax bill and then pass it through to Mass Development when it's collected.
Thank you.
No problem. Good question.
Anyone else have questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes. Just ask you to read the text that's on the form of vote.
It's a very formal motion.
Okay. Now therefore be it voted as follows. The Select Board of the Town of Great Barrington hereby approves the town participating in PACE Massachusetts pursuant to the PACE Act and authorize the town manager to enter into a PACE Massachusetts Municipal Assessment and Assignment Agreement with Mass Development pursuant to which the town will agree to levy PACE better net, betterment assessments and impose PACE betterment assessment liens on benefited properties located in the town in the amounts determined by Mass Development to be sufficient to repay the PACE financing. Number two, assign the PACE betterment assessment liens to Mass Development, which Mass Development may in turn assign to the providers of the PACE financing, each a capital provider as collateral for such PACE financing. Three, include on the property tax bills for the benefited properties the installment payments necessary to repay the PACE betterment assessments in the amounts and at the time.
in the amounts and at the times as determined by mass development. Four, collect and pay over to mass development or is or its designate the pace betterment assessment installment payments as and when collected. And number five, enforce to the extent required by the agreement, the pace betterment assessments and liens. The agreement to be substantially in the form presented to this meeting with such charges, modifications and insertions as the town manager may approve as being in the best interest of the town. The treasurer slash collector of the town or such other town officer or agency as may be designated in the agreement is authorized to levy such pace betterment assessments and impose the pace betterment assessment liens on behalf of the town without further authorization by the select board. Notwithstanding any other provision of law to the contrary, officers and officials of the town, including without limitation, town tax assessors and tax collectors, tax collectors are not personally liable to mass development or to any other person for claims or whatever kind of nature under or related to the pace Massachusetts, including without limitations, claims for or related to uncollected pace betterment assessments. Other than fulfillment of the obligations specified in the agreement, the town has no liability to the owner of the benefited property or to any capital provider related to the town's participation in pace Massachusetts.
Do you have something fancy for me to read or do I just second it? You just second. So I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Seeing none. Can I have uh, any questions? But uh, I do like the sounds of this and I look at a lot of industrial buildings that need a lot of renovation. This gives me some hope and uh, makes me excited.
Agreed. Roll call vote Garfield. Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Congratulations on being fifty first. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
So next is a Housatonic School RFP timeline and process. So the hope is tonight that we, Mark and Chris will give us an overview of the RFP. We can go through, there are question marks in it for us to decide and then other questions we may have. Depending on the amount of changes we make tonight, we may either approve this tonight or put this on the agenda for the next meeting or the meeting after with the changes incorporated for us to approve. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Steve. So uh, hopefully everyone had an opportunity to review the first uh, draft in your packet for this evening. Uh, thank you, Chris, for taking the lead on this. And uh, this version that uh, Chris puts together here takes into consideration feedback from the Houstonic Improvement Committee. And I do see several members of the, of that committee on the line tonight with us, so. Uh, it's, that's, uh, it's great to see them here. Uh, I guess I would, my question to you would be, uh, would you like to launch into a discussion about potential edits? There are several question marks in this. Uh, for clarification for staff or would you like, uh, Chris to walk you through summary?
Uh, I think both. Let Chris walk us through a summary and then we'll go through the edits.
Okay, uh, happy to do so. The um, I won't take you through all the minutia of the RFP. It is structured uh, in a similar way to past RFPs, just because when when the town disposes of property, we have to do certain things. And this is the way that both the procurement law and town council advise us to do it. Um, but there are aspects of the RFP in which we discuss uh, the site within the context of Houstonic Village. Uh, and uh, when we discussed the uh, building itself and uh, the towns, um, the types of uses the town would like to see and encourage in the building. And uh, what I've done is take what the Houstonian Improvement Committee has uh, presented to the select board and try to incorporate that uh, in those sections where it discusses the the uses and the types of proposals that the town would like to see. But not just limited to that. Um, so what I would suggest that the select board do is be as open as possible. Be upfront about what it would hope to see, but certainly not limit the potential uses. A creative uh, developer with expertise in reusing old buildings uh, who may come in with some fantastic ideas that that meet some of the needs that and opportunities that we see. So I don't want to limit that. Um, I would include, I think, I would recommend including the Houstonic Improvement Committee's report to the select board as an attachment, so that people can see the amount of thought and time uh, that has gone into this process. Um, you know, look at the floor plans, the sketches, the results of the shred. I think that all could be um, really, really good for a developer. It's very exciting to to look at and it sort of sees that the community is has been thinking about this and is energized to um, uh, you know, entertain some possibilities. So um, there are some, in terms of the timeline, uh, where whenever you do issue it, we recommend a minimum ninety day uh, turnaround. Uh, we're all anxious to see something uh, happen with this building. But um, just keep in mind, we think it should be out there for enough time that an interested developer, their, their builders, their architects, their engineers, their financing team can put together a package for you that responds to the RFP and that makes sense. Um, there are certain things that if you do get favorable responses to the RFP and you want to move forward with a development team, at that point, you could talk about um, some of the terms and conditions, you know, the performance standards and timelines of when that developer would have to do certain things. But those are sorts, the things that you don't need to include in the RFP. Uh, let's get those proposals in the door and then we can work on the timeline and things like that. Um. So I think I'll stop talking there and um, we can go through section by section or whatever else you would like to do.
Yeah, let's go section by section. Whether, you want to lead us through that?
Okay. I, I guess I'll just uh, say section one introduction. And if there are no comments, um, and if I have no questions for you there, um, we'll just continue on. Anything? Introduction. Location and setting. Section two.
I may plan to say what I'm about to ask in there. Um, where we say the, um, just under we use, the top of page three, the proposed uses of the building may be varied, but the town encourages proposals for multifamily. Um, should we be more specific in saying, uh, this would be the place to say, bring us whatever you got. Um, I have the wording I made up and I've never written one of these, so um, this is just a suggestion. Um, the town will consider any use of the building, uh, but priority will be given to a project that retained historic building and include multifamily housing. Can you do this? No, just stay right there that whatever you got. Um, and you're nodding and nobody else is throwing things at me yet, so then I'm going to even add. Um, and again, I haven't seen the uh, what I've, I'm afraid to say this out loud. Town will consider any use of the existing building, including demolition as a last choice, but and then continuing with our priorities are. Um, if, and then I'm saying that, and again, I'm throwing this out for discussion. Um, if that's all we get, if somebody says, you know what, I want to tear that down and build you this wonderful thing and nobody else has expressed an interest, do we want to say no automatically? Um, and I, I know at that point it goes back to the Zatonic Committee, but I just don't know if this is the point where we want to preclude that or if we want to throw that out there. And I'm not the expert in answering that question either, as a Houstonic resident, a former student of the school or a staff who's done this before.
There's, there's no, you know, a statement of priority like that is you, you can make that. If the, if the board wants to say that, you could say that.
As I guess right now for us, can it, maybe if we discuss it as two separate things. Um, let's leave the demolition part of it out of it, just because I'm not comfortable with that. Um, and this is the point where I think we should say, whatever you got, come at us. This is what we're, what we're thinking. Um, but just make it clear, make any, any suggestion.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with your first part. Uh, I'm not ready to put demolition in there because it's like that we're inviting demolition as a consideration. I still like to think that's not a consideration yet. Okay, Eric, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, Steve, I, I'm in agreement with you. I, I don't want to limit the uh, proposals that come in, but the way you stated it, Ed, um, as far as, you know, we're encouraging the, these items here, but we're not, you know. If they throw some new creative idea that has not been thought out, I wouldn't want to limit that, you know, so. Um, but yeah, and I would refrain from demolition statement.
Then the, uh, something like the town will consider any use of the existing building, but priority will be given to projects that retain the historic building and include multifamily housing. And then the sentence is there. Yeah, no, I, I think that's good. I think right now demolition is still a four letter word. Yes, also, if that's what we choose to do, there's really a hurry.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, everybody's nodding with to add suggestions?
Yes.
Great. Okay, anything else, Ed, or anybody else on that section? Section four is description of the premises. It's pretty straightforward. Not a lot you can, you can say there. Um, but there is a note under building systems, uh, where we talk about uh, um, the uh, fire and security system, the sprinkler system with onsite storage may be needed. I think that's relevant to put in to help a developer think about the costs of what that could be. I don't know if you want to know, uh, the fact, uh, that there have been uh, numerous complaints and problems with the water quality of the system. If you want to acknowledge that as the seller upfront or what you'd like to do. So that's a note. Question for you.
Is that a required disclosure if you're selling the property?
Well, um, as we know, uh, technically the water quality is not, um, the drinking water quality is not impacted. Certainly doesn't, doesn't always look great.
We can mark it down as, as saying that the it's a private water company, right? Just notifying that it's not a public water company since we have the sewer is available on the street right next to it and water is provided by a private water company.
That's a good distinction to make in any case.
Yep. I would leave it at that.
Everybody okay?
Hmm.
Any other comments in that section? Section five zoning is pretty straightforward. Section six just lets people know that yes, the select board does have the ability to sell this uh, parcel or dispose of it uh, in a way that it sees fit. Okay, terms and conditions proposed uses is section seven. Developers obligations, it does discuss what we know about the hazardous materials there, which we didn't know all of that in the last go around. Um, on page six, other rights and responsibilities, the developer shall be, this was the old wording, shall be solely responsible for. And I'm questioning whether or not you want to put it in there, because later we do talk about possible uh, partnerships with the town, so we don't need that word solely. Um, any suggestions there? I'd be happy to consider.
I'm, I'm not sure I know what you mean, Chris.
That was, that was a word, uh, I saw in, in the previous RFP and uh, it just said the developer shall be solely responsible for the following costs, all of the costs. Um, where later in the RFP, it is written that the select board could consider, subject to any appropriation votes that it may require infusing additional funding into the building. Um.
Sorry, would you suggest, I mean, taking the word solely out, that seems to be, uh, makes sense actually. Um, because otherwise we would, if you left the word solely, and why would you have the rest of it at the end?
Right, right. Okay, I think I'll, I'll take that out unless there's some objections there.
That's a question?
Yes, Garfield.
Wh- what is the concern with the developer being solely responsible for the costs?
Because at the, at the end, we talk about a private public partnership. And that's what Houstonic Improvement Committee has discussed. And if we're going to entertain that, the word, we could change the developer may be responsible for, but that's a little wishy washy. So uh, shall, I realize is a legal term that is a requirement, but I, I like to leave that in, but I think solely becomes redundant a- and kind of makes the rest at the end um, inconsequential.
Also, there was that the, and I think this is what we're leading to, the money that had been approved at previous town meetings, right, that could help with the structure of the building.
And that's known about page seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we should take that. Shall be solely out. Okay. I couldn't recall why it was in there and so I thought I better flag it, bring it up. Um, can we move on to subsection two there, town support? Begins on page seven.
Yep.
So this does discuss that the town intends to be a partner to the extent we can in shepherding a project through the approvals process. Um, and participating and contributing to those costs certainly where we have the responsibility, for example, the environmental remediation. Uh, that subsection that reads additional support from the town does discuss the previous town meeting appropriations of six hundred fifty thousand dollars, partly from the Community Preservation Act and partly from the sale of the Old Squirrel School Fund um, towards the exterior envelope, the roof, the windows, uh, the history to the, see how far we can get. Um, the town is open to considering and assisting the developer with applications of grants, funding, CPA, et cetera. Um, uh, historic preservation, affordable housing, uh, could all be eligible CPA applications. Um, and then as noted previously in town, um, is open to considering other things. Um, now we can add pace, property system, clean energy to that list. Uh, TIFs, et cetera.
Let me, let me ask one question, Chris. Do we want to put a provision about the six hundred fifty thousand? The developer comes in with a great idea, plenty of financing and really thinks that, you know, they're going to make some money on this. They have a real good business plan. I don't think the town needs to, I think the six fifty would be if we're going to do a private public partnership of some sort and that's what we choose to do, then that money's available. But if a well-heeled developer comes in um, and we're lucky enough to find someone who has a great plan and they're going to take the six fifty, of course, because why wouldn't they? But should we really offer it to someone who's just buying the building and going to develop it on their own?
Mm-hmm. That's a good point.
Okay. Shall we mention that statement? Should we hedge that statement?
It might make it more attractive. First of all, it's in the, the report of the Houstonian Committee. Um, that's going with this, but it might make somebody reply, reply to this who wouldn't otherwise, when they do the math. The, the problem, the problem I have is every time we sell a building, we sell it for pennies on the dollar. And then and then give them a coupon for $650,000. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
Except that it costs us a million to take it down if no one buys it. Right, we we have to, we put this out twice and nobody's responded. That's my concern is if that happens again. I understand entirely what you're saying and I have, you know, it's why I'm not good at negotiating. I have no idea what what likely. I would not object to what you're saying.
Would it need to be worded in there, Steve and me, or is it something we take in consideration when the proposals are in front of us? You know, if if, you know, there's several proposals, you know, I'm hoping for several proposals. So if there's several in front of us and and one, one person's, you know, using that 650 in their calculation breakdown for us on how they're going to get to their end game and other companies, other proposals are not are willing to take it off is that can we do it along that way?
Yeah, I mean, if all things are equal and there are two proposals and I hope there are more than one and I hope there are many. There are two proposals and one has can you can come with a plan without using the 650 and one uses the 650? I'd say we take the one that doesn't use it. I mean, I think that makes sense. Eileen, I will entertain a question. Eileen, if just unmute yourself, you had your hand up.
It was a cat thing. I'm sorry. I didn't.
That's okay. Say say hi to your cat. I have a couple of people with their hands up and I'll answer a really brief comments. So just state your name and address, Angela.
Angela Lamonto, 326 North Plain Road. I am a member of the Housatonic Improvement Committee. I think it's really important that the language for whatever the town can do to get the building developed be pitched out there to a potential developer. Because we we spent some time talking to developers and the costs of rehabbing that building are never going to make sense unless the town steps up. So I would urge you to make the RFP as attractive as possible to a potential developer.
Thank you, Angela. Phil Orenstein?
Phil Orenstein for Alfred Road. I I sympathize and agree with Steve's comments about the statement about the 650 and I hear the other comments. I would just ask the board to consider a middle ground. I don't, I think the language in there right now is you're basically saying here, here's a check for 650 and independent of as Steve mentions, whether the financial resources of the developer or, you know, or kind of what they look like. So I would ask that the language be made a little more conditional and that say something like that the town has 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 voted appropriated and appropriated and has authorization for a total of 650 and depending upon the characteristics of the projects and the and the options of the town has, it can it can consider prompt. It can consider probably supplying these funds to the project to make it work. So I'm advocating for a middle ground.
Thank you, Phil. Ben Elliott?
Hi, this is actually Cecilia Turner. I'm at 208 Pleasant Street. I live across from the building and I just wanted to chime in to ask about timeline and whether that's being considered as part of this. Just because watching the watching the building every day. I I understand that we want to do this all as swiftly as possible, but it's also there is time is of the essence as far as how long it's going to stand on its own. It's looking pretty rough. So I just wanted to that out there.
Yeah, and we agree with you. So as Chris pointed out at the beginning, we'll put at least 90 days for the RFP because in order to get a really well thought out RFP, we need to do that. And then whoever's chosen, there'll be negotiations about a timeline so that it won't unlike other buildings we've had, it hopefully won't sit there untouched for a number of years going forward. So yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Thanks.
So going going back to the 650, though, I guess what and I'm sure the wording can be changed in a manner, but I guess what I would be worried about is is steering people away from it. And then, you know, I think what we got to keep in mind is future income and benefit to the town as far as business it could bring in rentals. And then if if there isn't any takers because of, you know, we might not give them the 650. Like Ed was mentioning, the cost to take the building down is going to be over a million. So
I I would like to see.
I don't want to word it too harshly, just you know, like a shell game. It almost sounds like, you know, I just, I think I'll just put it out there and leave it out there, but.
Yeah, no, I I think Phil is correct. I think not every developer, assuming we get more than one, is going to require that 650. Sure, if we offer it to them, no one's going to turn it down. I think there's got to be some consideration of whether we're going to offer to them or not and what the, you know, what will be attached to that, what the town will get in for giving that 650.
Can can we ask Chris and Mark to try and come up with some middle ground wording?
Of course.
We didn't parse it right here, but.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing worse than doing wordsmithing in a public meeting.
Okay, so we're all good with finding some different way to say it's available to the right project.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else in this general section? Some of the highlights in section eight, which are the proposals submittal requirements. More and more, as I go to conferences or I talk to developers and teams, whether they're bidding on a capital project or something like this is you know, the world is moving on to PDFs and electronic submittals. In some ways, that's really great. It's easy to send around, especially if we're all meeting in virtual format. The downside is you don't necessarily have the hard copies books in front of you to flip to page 10 to see what it says or to look at a large scale plan. So I guess I'm just wondering what the select board's pleasure would be there in terms of what sort of plans you want to review. You want something electronic or do you want the do you want to hard copy responses?
I have a hard time.
That's that's one for each. So you all have to, you. Okay.
To have the paper packets and paper plans in front of me, to be honest with you. I have a question on this section, though, also, Chris. What's what's what? Blue ink as why, why is that stated so many times on that? Just straight curiosity has to be signed with blue ink.
I guess it was just to make sure that it is an original. Just easier to tell that it's.
Photocopy, I get it.
You know, wet live signature. Yeah. It's a bit nitpicky, I guess, but.
From the days before color copying.
Right, right. Rest of the seminal requirements are are pretty basic. If you have project ideas, if you have plans, sketches, show us, tell us what they are, tell us who you are. Tell us where you've done this before, hopefully lots of other places successfully. Ensure us that you can take this through to completion either with or without $650,000 or more. Various certifications, anything else that you think should be required? That you absolutely must have in order to make it a well-formed decision.
Obviously, references aren't here, Chris, or does that come in the later stage once we get the first?
We do ask for a minimum of three professional references for comparable projects.
Yeah.
And I I should offer, since Mark and I are going to take another crack at this and some of the wording, if there are other things that individual think of, Mark, is it acceptable for for individual members to email just you and I? And we can incorporate changes as suggestions.
Sure.
To review your next, you know, so if you think of something to include in here, just email Mark and I. And then we can put it in for the board to discuss next time.
I just had a general question, but I can wait till we can get through the whole thing. I mean, it's about this.
Let's get through.
Okay. Anything under the evaluation criteria?
Is it tie our hands if we go back to that original statement about what we're looking for? Because it doesn't say here, I mean, it does say about our objectives. But you should be at this point list in order what we're looking for, or is that if that's unnecessary, I would say we shouldn't do that. We should leave it as is. But we want to be saying we're going to pick the project we like. We have to give an indication of what that means. Or did we already in the beginning?
I think we already said it. And I think we could restate it again in within those first three bullets under B. How we will determine what is advantage, not advantage, advantageous. So very advantageous if you meet the objectives that we stated back in the early section, very advantageous. You know, that's so we can include it in there. Maybe if you want to really cover the bases. Okay. Section 10 is just the process that we'll go through and and we'll put a date in there for the under section 10 for the site, site tour, site visit. The rest of section 10 is is pretty straightforward. Go ahead.
In in, I don't know if now's the time, but under the summary of the schedule.
Yep.
And you have advertised in newspapers. Do we? Can we have a discussion on which newspapers those will be advertised in?
We, so this is the minimum requirements we must advertise in the newspaper, physical newspaper of local circulation, which in this case is the Eagle. That's a minimum requirement. We can do whatever else you'd like.
Yeah, I would like to just throw out a much broader, farther reaching, you know. So.
Yeah, let's, that's a good discussion to have. These are, these are minimums.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I I agree with Eric. This is our last shot at this. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be a newspaper. There's nothing that stops us from putting it. There must be some online places that this could go into. That would be much farther reaching than in this paper.
And if you have specific suggestions, let us let Mark and I know. That's not anything we need to write in here. That's just, we'll just do it. But we need to to let them know that the minimum requirements, the timeline.
Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, it's along these same lines as marketing it and a couple items that I was thinking about was, you know, really, I know this is pretty much a dry document, but I'm just wondering in terms of marketing it to on a bigger, a bigger scale, if we've thought about having, you know, pictures and telling them how great Great Barrington is and where we've come from and and really selling Great Barrington and, you know, the growth that we've seen as opposed to just having kind of a dry document. And I know that that kind of takes it to a different level, but I really think that this time, because we've done RFP so many times to really sell the town as part of this and go the extra step, even if it costs a little bit extra, you know, to have photos, to have links to videos to, you know, to talk about some of our residents. You know, really, really sell why this is a special place and why they should be happy to be part of us. So I'd really like us to emphasize that and make it more of a marketing piece as well as obviously the RFP. But I think that this is the time that we should really sell the town.
Yeah, and it's quite possible that the school district has some pictures. Pictures of the building right now may not be appropriate, but pictures of of what it what it looked like before and how it can be returned to that that look would be would be nice.
Yeah. So I mean, even if you know, some of the concepts that that would come up with the the HIC that they brought, you know, a green and and different things, if we give a sense of this is the ideal project, you know, this is the feel that we're trying to get. This is the vibrancy. This is the community green. This is the, you know, the town center. So, you know, try to almost steer someone into getting excited about being part of this this town. So I think that's really, really key in this in this version of the RFP that we're doing. So.
Great. Maybe Mark and I could talk about a strategy in that regard.
Right.
And as far as the newspapers and back to all that, I I think, yeah, we have to do the major newspapers like the Times and the Globe and Journal possibly. And then if we have a link to the marketing likely was just discussing, you know, just along those lines and just try to have every every marketing front covered for the final hurrah here of the Housatonic School, I think would be appropriate.
And there's also, sorry, I've been into, you know, in addition to going kind of the usual channels with papers and so forth. You know, I think there's residents and there's locals that if they knew that this was really an option, that might jump on this. So, you know, how we target that to specific residents and locals and and people, you know, just to be a bit creative and think out of the box to get this in the hands of those people. Because a lot of people, you know, it might not be on their radar, but if we can sell them this, they might just start thinking about it. So I I would really encourage just, you know, thinking outside the box in terms of marketing this on a wider scale. Not that you have it. I know you always do, Chris, but.
Thinking outside the box in terms of inside the town. Yeah, not forgetting about inside the town. Yeah, okay, great suggestions. Thanks, Eric, too, for those. But I think Mark and I could talk about kind of a a marketing strategy. How to do that. We'll see what resources we have and what that would take to put that together, but.
Right.
And Steve, if if you could scare up any photos, that'd be great.
I'll I'll email Steve Soul and Peter and see. There's got to be some that we can, you know, we'll put a date on. We're not trying to tell people that's what the building looks like, but but the building did look really good when it was a school.
We can probably dedicate some of Ellen's time to help us with the PR component.
I don't think it would be so bad to have the talk of what the building was, show what it was, but also show what it looks like now. As you said, but wouldn't you love to, as Lisa said, some marketing to bring it back to where it was? I think we should show what it looks like as well. I I think so.
Thanks.
Thanks, Gar.
Any any questions? The the summary, the schedule there that is assuming a 90 day timeline. The 90 days runs from the first date that's published in the state's procurement central register.
Assuming we're going to want, I mean, those are flexible, those dates. Assuming that we, I think we made enough changes tonight. We'd like to see it come back to us. So whether that's the next meeting, which isn't that far away, or the So whether that's the next meeting, which isn't that far away, or the meeting after that, whenever you have it ready, that's fine.
Okay, great. Moving on, some little requirements. This is pretty basic. We'll stick with the hard copies. Selection process, this is just saying how how we'll work with the with those who have submitted. We'll do interviews, we'll rank rank the proposals. These are some of the items that we'll consider in making the decisions. And when I say we, I mean you, you five.
Can I throw something out there? And we include some Husatonic residents in this selection and your to have a say.
The ultimate decision is the select board.
Right.
If we want to have other people weigh in, that's fine. We can have a public meeting, but ultimately, we're the ones who are going to decide this. We can have a public meeting to give comments.
I'd like that.
We can clarify too with town council what that process looks like. You know, certain negotiations may be done in executive session. I'm not sure, but then how is then is it is it brought to a public session? So we'll we'll as council how that how that goes and you know, I think there are public opportunities to at least see what is being proposed or is hopefully being proposed. So we'll clarify that for you.
Thank you, Chris. Good points.
Okay, thanks, Garfield. Anything else that we should include list? Strikes you was a a statement that I would like to include in the RFP. Probably where we're discussing town's objectives. I neglected to include it in your packet. I'd like to read it for you. That's okay. So the statement would be the town of Great Barrington is committed to a holistic view of sustainability and justice. Proposals are encouraged that take into account environmental sustainability through adaptive reuse, energy efficiency, renewable energy, green infrastructure, et cetera. In keeping with our commitments to diversity, equity and inclusion proposals that center the needs of the most marginalized through a deep commitment to affordability and housing and ideas that promote inclusion to people of color, LGBTQ community members, and those living with disabilities are also encouraged. We'd like to include that statement in the RFP. That's never been in there before, but in keeping with our recent work in that area, we suggest that it's important.
Excellent. Excellent.
Great. So should to bring us back to the board on the 24th.
If you can get it done by the 24th, we would love that.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you. Next on the agenda is a short discussion. It's a process one about short-term rental bylaws, next steps. So my proposal is this, the planning board hopes to conclude their discussion on the short-term rental bylaw on this Thursday evening. I would like to to see us because time is of the essence, depending whether we do a general bylaw or zoning bylaw that next Tuesday, the 18th, that we have a meeting to start the discussion over what's sent to us from the planning board and also ideas Lee has has to incorporate into a bylaw. And then we can conclude that at our next meeting on the 24th. But I think that time is is ticking away and we need need to meet. So if everyone is available next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, that would be wonderful.
Did we just get a notice about a joint meeting? Or was that the, that was the subcommittee, right?
That was the subcommittee.
Yes. So the 18th?
18th.
Works for me.
Eric?
Six o'clock, Steve.
Prefer preferably. So we will, we will do that. We will post that meeting. Mark will make that happen with the the agenda with Amy and we will, we will move ahead with a STR bylaw. Okay. Citizen speak time. Start with Erica Milky.
Hi, everyone. Erica Milky, 13 East Street. Um, I had a couple of general questions about how I attended my first Board of Health meeting last week and I don't understand how the Board of Health operates in conjunction with the town manager and the select board. And I was really surprised by the lack of the only a couple of people on the Board of Health had health and medical backgrounds. And I was really disheartened by some of the comments that the chair made around COVID and COVID vaccines. And I'm just curious. I just had no idea. I assumed it was all health professionals making these decisions in our town and influencing the school committee in that way. So I guess my question has a few parts. How does the does the Board of Health operate independently? And is voting the only way to change the management on there? And is the Board of Health required to operate under? You know, like, should only citizens or people who live or work in Great Barrington be allowed to participate in those meetings? There were people calling in from all over the place that weren't being cut off or directed elsewhere. So it just felt really chaotic and disheartening. And I was curious what as citizens or as our governing body you or I have control over in that area.
So Erica, because it's a process question, I will try to answer all of your questions. Board of Health is elected. It's autonomous. It's it. We, the select board or the town manager has any control over the Board of Health. And like any elected body, the the voters determine who they think is best suitable to serve on that board. There are no requirements that they be have a medical background. As far as who can speak at a meeting? I obviously have my opinion and and gave it to the chair that evening and try to use that and you attend every meeting I chair, I think. So.
Yeah.
But it's really.
I never appreciated you so much as during that meeting, Steve. I was like, wow, I can give Steve a hard time.
But it's at the purview of the chair. Yeah, and I do set rules, especially for meetings like that. Not every chair thinks I do it correctly, and that's okay. But it is totally at the purview of the chair.
How is the chair determined?
By vote of the members of the board.
Wow, okay. Thank you. It was a disheartening meeting. Thank you for your efforts that night. Thanks for letting me say my piece.
No problem. Peter Frank.
Hello. I find that.
Name and address, please.
Peter Frank, 16 Lakeview Road in Great Barrington.
Thank you.
I that the three issues being discussed, so the SDR wasn't specifically discussed tonight are all interestingly related by, there seems to be a general hostility that I'm sensing towards people who are supposed are so-called not local people. Like, you're going to shift the tax burden through this tax proposal to increase the tax burden on people who don't live here full-time.
Just to correct you, we did not adopt that. We.
No, but I'm saying that it's, no, I granted, but it's being considered. And I think it relates to the issue of the STR about how people, how this town treats people who are second homeowners that they are not, you know, equal citizens because they're being taxed to a greater extent and their rights are being limited because of the limits on the STR. And then thirdly, I've heard that you're trying to market Great Barrington as a great place for a developer to come into and spend a huge amount of money presumably renovating the Husatonic School. And it seems to me that it's going to be very difficult to present this town as being friendly to developers when at every corner I see, you know, limits on what you can do with your property. And a general hostility to people who are not so-called locals. And I think that I'm just seeing this as a pervasive attitude in town and to think that you're going to get a developer to come in and renovate this huge building, huge project, and then have him be unable to rent the way have tenants there presumably if it goes to be residential. How are, you know, how are they going to market it when the owners, if it's a condo or whatever, can't are extremely limited by by what policies are adopted by the select board. So I just feel like as someone who has invested a lot of money in the community as an architect and as someone who's renovated quite a few projects, I find it really disheartening and off-putting.
Thank you very much.
Steve, can I just clarify what we did with the residential exemption?
I thought I had, but if I didn't, you can.
It's just that every, every year we are required to consider and either adopt or not adopt it. The state law may have this rule, and every year the assessors make a recommendation, which I thought we just sort of blindly follow. So all we did was ask for what the statistics are so that the next time we're making an actual decision as opposed to a rubber stamp. But.
Thank you. Thank you. Charlie Williams.
Yeah, Steve, can you hear me? You can. Okay, Charlie Wampson, 48 Blue Hill Road. Steve, you said you'd get some information back to me from the last meeting. I don't, do you have it or no?
We'll get it to you for the next time, Charlie. I'm sorry.
That's no problem. If you want, Steve, you could just call me. It's really not a big issue.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chip Litzer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Okay, I'm following up on the Oh, sorry. Chip Litzer, 39 Alford Road.
Thank you.
I'm following up on the, you know, sort of ongoing discussion regarding the residential exemption. I know that it it is. It has always been that we we use a single unified rate. I also understand Ed's concern that it seems to be fairly pro forma and that perhaps a residential exemption should be further studied or at least get more statistics on it. I would like to suggest that the 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 real elephant in the room, the one I've talked about a lot, has been the fact that 70% of Great Barrington's property taxes go to pay for the Great Barrington share of the school budget. That compares to less than 30% in Stockbridge. We pay three and a half times the effective property tax rate to support the school district and the taxpayers in Stockbridge do. And the reason for that is very simple. Stockbridge has a much higher percentage of second homeowners, second homeowners, a much higher percentage. A much higher amount of property value compared to the number of students that are going to the school. The more students we have in our school district relative to our neighboring towns, the greater share of the budget we pay. I don't think it's debatable that the best thing we could do to lower our taxes or at least to impede the rapid growth in our taxes would be to attract to our tax base more second homeowners who almost never have their kids in our school district. And more expensive homes and more more commercial property. Any anything that adds to our tax base without adding a commensurate number of students in our schools, because our proportion of our school budget is largely determined by the relative number of students that we send to the district compared to our neighboring towns. And by not adopting residential exemption, but even suggesting that it's a possibility that the select board is still considering it and next year might be the year that the hammer comes down on second homeowners or people building properties that are more than the average value is actually having, it's shooting ourselves in the foot. Or in both kneecaps. It's exactly the wrong message to send to the people that we would want to attract to the town to lower taxes for everybody by expanding tax base with people who are unlikely to add students to our school district. So I would I would say it it makes makes complete sense to continue with a single rate, to not discriminate against non-residents and to cease and desist suggesting that given further information or further study, we might in fact decide to go with with a residential exemption. So my my case would be leave it alone and make a fairly clear decision that this is something that really does not make sense to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Chip. Eileen.
Hi, three things. Number one, I think the Board of, a Board of Health must have a medical person on its board. Which it does because Ruby is a pediatrician. Number two. Is there a policy on circulating amended agendas? When the regular agenda, I'm I'm sorry, packets, the packet for the selectmen is now being sent out, but when it's amended, it is not always sent, only sometimes. And I wondered if it could always be sent because I had two people tonight inquire about the changes that were referred to from the packet that they had looked at earlier.
It's reasonable that if the packet is amended that it should be sent out to the same people the original packet was sent to and it should be posted online.
It is posted online, but it's not always sent to the same people.
But it's reasonable to anticipate that if you got the original and there was a change, you should get the change.
I agree. Thank you. Number three. Is the Board of Selectmen going to do anything about amending its regulations so that people may speak before the Board votes on a topic?
We haven't entertained that, but I not discourage people from speaking. Anyone who raises their hand, I recognize. I've recognized you. I recognize your cat.
I know. The cat says thank you, by the way.
I never discourage people from speaking if they raise their hand.
Okay. All right. So you're not going to change the regulation?
We hadn't talked about it. If the, any of the select board members want to, we we can, we'll discuss it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Vivian Orlovsky.
Thank you, Steve. This is Vivian Orlovsky. Oh, I have an echo. Are you hearing the echo?
Yes, we are, but just go ahead. We can still understand you.
Well, if you just, if you just wait a second, I'll turn off the other.
That would be great. That would be great.
Um, thank you. Thank you for giving me that opportunity to speak with, uh, an echo. Um, yes, I, I'm also concerned about the, um, residential exemption, um, presentation tonight. Um, this is not something that has not been examined. It received a very thorough examination before the finance committee when a select board member, Lee Davis, was on the finance committee back in 2015. There was a public hearing at the fire station where over 80 people showed up and jammed that room and were standing out in the hall for several hours. A number of citizens had done extensive research on how the residential exemption is in effect in other places in Massachusetts and comparing our situation to theirs, which was quite different because they had a different balance between, um, uh, non-residents and residents and also will commercial properties. And, um, so first of all, I wanted to set the record straight on that. This has been examined thoroughly and it has met with considerable concern by a number of residents. Um, and secondly, um, it's interesting that you talked about continuing discussion of this, but I did not hear any mention about, um, the finance committee being invited to consider it or a, a public hearing as was held previously when it first, uh, came up in 2015. So as a procedural question, if I may ask that, you said that you would answer procedural questions. Do you see referral to the, um, to the finance committee or a public hearing before taking any further action on this matter?
Yes. Yes, Vivian. We're just not that far along. This, this is something the select board requested. Um, not everyone on the select board was on the board back then. And when new boards come on or people, uh, still want to investigate it, we, we do. Um, I, I have my opinion on it, but I, I wanna hear it through. So we will, if we are serious about this before we adopt it, which I'm not saying we will, before we even entertain adopting it, we will have a public hearing and we will invite the finance committee.
Um, th- thank you, Steve. I just, uh, one request. How can we, uh, get a copy of the report? I was disappointed to see it wasn't included in the packet.
We will, we will post it online.
Thank you.
It, it is in the packet. It's in the second version that's currently online.
Oh, here again, the second version is the issue. Okay.
Yeah, it was left off the first one inadvertently. And seeing no one else, um, select board time, uh, Garfield.
Nothing other than I saw them putting up some fencing on the outside of, uh, nine, 10 Main Street, South Main Street. So to get in there to do some work, that was nice to see.
Good. Yeah, I, I agree with you. Eric?
Uh, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Ed?
Nothing.
Lee?
Uh, uh, two things, please. Um, just to announce that there is a community preservation committee meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM and we're gonna be reviewing open space and recreation applications uh, for the step two. And also on Wednesday at 5:00 PM, we have, um, a housing subcommittee meeting, the, uh, a joint meeting of the planning board and the select board, the housing subcommittee is gonna be meeting, um, on Wednesday. And just to note, um, there has been some, uh, citizens talking back and forth about the, um, the property tax bills that have come out. So, uh, just requests to, um, I guess this is for Mark, just to take a look at the, uh, assessors data that's available online. Um, some of it's uh, outdated, I believe, and there has been con- concern, um, about the abatement process. If that could be, uh, better explained possibly on, uh, forthcoming tax bill for next year, just to, um, to make it easier so people know what to do if they want to, um, to talk about, uh, a possible abatement application. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Uh, media time. Seeing no one, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.